All right, so our Board of Education meeting is not yet officially started. It will begin in four minutes, but I opened this up early just to announce that individuals participating, if you would like to make a public comment, you can do so by putting your name, address, and your topic in the Q and A portion on this Zoom meeting. Down in the bottom part of your screen, you should see Q and A. Again, put in your name, address, and your topic, and when we get to the public comments section of the meeting, you will be called upon.
We only have three board numbers so far, right?
It appears that way.
Okay.
All right. Looks like Donna and Melissa are in as attendees, so I'm going to promote them to panelists, so they should be joining us now. Donna and Sue, are you there?
And Melissa?
And Melissa, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Okay, and I think Mr. Deveraux just joined as well.
Yes, I haven't heard from Veronica.
For some reason, we have even some of our student advisors, Lala, are coming in as attendees, so I'm promoting them to panelists. Let's make sure that next time we do this, that we ensure they get the right code. So for attendees who are joining the meeting, if you would like to make a public comment tonight during the public comments section, which will be right after the strategic plan update, please write your name, address, and your topic into the Q and A portion of this webinar. You'll see that at the bottom of your screen. You can click and type that in. We will then call upon you during public comments if you do enter that information.
Yeah, Veronica's here, okay, good.
Madam President, it's seven o'clock.
All right, so I will call the April 20th, 2020 U-46 Board of Education meeting to order. Could I have roll call, please?
Mr. Deveraux? I know he's here, thank you. Ms. Nolan?
Here.
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Mrs. Porter?
Here.
Mrs. Smith? Mrs. Smith?
Sorry, I was muted here.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Madam President?
Here. Okay, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, the flag will be displayed on the computer screen. And this. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. All right. Hey, first item on the agenda is Strategic Plan Report, Mr. Sanders.
Yes, let me take a moment just quickly to get the PowerPoint up for our student advisors. Can you all see the screen? Hopefully displaying. Okay, so as the board is aware, we've held annually for the last four years a student summit where students from across U-46 gather together. Members of my superintendent student advisory serve as facilitators for the conversations along with Hallie Furtick this year as the student board member to lead those conversations around a variety of topics. Here to present the strategic or the student summit report is Graham Hunt of South Elgin High School, Martina Mendel-Duckens of Larkin, Michelle Estrada of Larkin, Jessica Pierce of Barlett High School, and I think Kristen Gack is also available and might be also presenting tonight, as well as Lala Mistorovic, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools Instruction and Equity. With that, I'll hand it over to the student advisors to lead us through their PowerPoint. Lala, is there, who goes first?
You can go ahead and move to the next slide, please.
Is Graham on? Graham is supposed to be the first one.
Let me check the attendee list here real quick and see, or actually, I can't see the attendee list. Brian Lindholm, can you look and see if Graham Hunt is in the attendees and promote him to panelist?
He is on as a panelist, Tony.
Okay. Graham?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. There you go. I'm gonna start off with you put access to the summit. This occurred on March 5th, 2020. We had over 200 students participate. And CEO, Edgers facilitated tables, table talk conversations in four areas: academics, culture and climate, post-secondary readiness, and miscellaneous. So, starting off, the most important area for improvement under academics were courses and grading systems. So, to start off, professional development for progress, consistently making sure teachers of the same department are meeting together a few times a year to make sure they are adhering to the same schedule and are teaching the same teachers, but should be having individual one-on-one conferences a couple of times a year to make sure the students are doing well and they are understanding what they are being taught in class. And continue communication between these. So that's, you know, the more communication there is, the better the courses and classes be. And develop still this clarity on formative assessives. So we really want to make sure that students and teachers know the exact difference between summatives and formatives, and that teachers are acknowledging that students will receive critical feedback on their formatives so that they know how they are doing in the class. So the next topic was grading systems. So, first, there was increased points of ease, establish more checkpoints for students to see their grades besides quarterly and some circles. We also have constructive feedback for formative, so some students felt guidance that they felt like they should get the formatives, and also making sure that both students and teachers are treating formatives as a central point of practice for the subject. And teachers need progress. So a lot of students at the summit want to make sure their teachers are communicating the meaning of standards, standards-based grading, and consistently upgrading infinite campus so that it shows the most accurate grades, so that not only students can easily find their grades, but also parents, counselors, and other administrative leaders. Next up is Jika presenting the culture and climate slide.
So one of our biggest takeaways from the summit was that we would really like to see more access to our social workers across the district. We would really like to be able to make sure that social workers are more available throughout the day, and we'd also like to see more district-wide policies to make sure that students are meeting their social workers before they actually need them. One idea we had for this was allowing social workers and students to meet face-to-face during freshman orientation. We'd also talk about discipline because many of us feel that if there's an incident that occurs, it's not enough to simply punish the student. The problems need to be addressed in more holistic manner to make sure that whatever is going on is sorted out and that the student can handle the issues properly next time. So if that means that either like a counselor or a social worker, a dean or a teacher could talk to that student and find out what's happening in their life that caused them to cause that incident, that would be really beneficial, I think, to most students. And then we'd also like to see a more consistent approach to hero points because as it is right now, they're not really being used consistently across the district as a whole. And so a lot of students, you could really benefit from getting hero points, aren't getting it, and so it's kind of being ignored as a tool for positive reinforcement as opposed to like helping students want to follow the rules. And for safety, we'd really like to see the deans interact all students equally because right now they are holding different students to different standards, and we feel that's putting not only our safety at risk, but also theirs, if there are some students who are given more freedom that they really shouldn't be given to keep our school safe. And we'd also like to see more communication and more early communication, maybe during class meetings about behavior expectations in our schools and the consequences if those expectations are not met, because right now there's a lot of confusion as to like what would happen if someone did something, and if there is an incident, what students should do to try to deescalate that. Next slide, please.
Ma'am, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Michelle. Go ahead.
Okay. So another, one of our main topics was post-secondary readiness. So based on our feedback, we found that alternative post-secondary plans for the students who, you know, don't think that college is for them and may want to take a different path, we believe that they.
Michelle, we lost your audio.
To professional help, professionals that are military or mechanics or something that they're interested in, you know, after high school to get them like better prepared. For college advising, I know at Larkin High School, we have Mrs. Walker, who was our college coordinator, and she helps students, you know, plan with their scholarships, you know, college applications, and she provides many opportunities for, you know, college trips. So we believe that, you know, it would be such an asset to every school if they each had, you know, a specific college coordinator who is, you know, she's, he or she would be there. Teachers and should really, you know, mentor these students. We also discussed Naviance, which is a site to help, you know, seniors, all students, guide them to colleges, scholarships, and stuff like that. So we discovered that it's not very well-known, and although it's like a great asset and, you know, a great site, we believe that, you know, teachers and students should have training to help prepare them to use this, you know. It has so many great opportunities for these students, however, it's not getting used as much because students aren't, you know, more aware of it. So they should be able to discuss, you know, these goals with their counselors for Naviance, you know, what to expect out of it, what to get out of it, their goals, and so on.
Okay, so moving on to miscellaneous. So based on feedback from the high schools, our biggest takeaways in the miscellaneous areas fall under four categories, which is class rank, school resources, community engagement, and mental health. So for class rank, there were a lot of differing opinions. A lot of people saw it as either very discouraging or, on the other side, just very encouraging and allowed people to be motivated to get their grades up and, you know, get a higher rank. With a variety of different opinions, it's very hard to find that middle balance. And so what we think is necessary in order for, you know, to get both the sides involved is educating students about the relevance of class rank as a whole and trying to find that middle ground of, is it encouraging, is it discouraging, and just trying to educate students on the importance of it and how it can help them grow. Furthermore, as we look into school resources, a lot of the time, students are not sure what is accessible to them or where they can go when they need help. So making the deans, the social workers, and the counselors more accessible in the grand scheme of things can often help students thrive in schools, whether it's informing them about who to go to for certain things, such as deans or social workers if they're feeling bad, or counselors. They just need to have that information in order to be able to communicate their issues with them. Even more so, moving forward towards community engagement, a lot of the students saw that they were, you know, trying to volunteer and trying to go out there into the community, but they didn't have the resources and the knowledge on where to go and how to find volunteer work or work or internships. So communicating those opportunities to students is very important, and they are looking for them. So that we really just want the ability to go out and show that us U-46 students can go out and work and volunteer. We just need those, that information and the resources to do so. And lastly, looking towards mental health and mental health issues when it comes to secondary education. So we need to break this sort of stigma about mental health and be okay with talking about it. We found that there was a lack of communication between social workers and students. That's sort of going back to the culture and climate of schools. So what we found is educating students on mental health and then educating students on when to ask for help and where to find it, i.e. the social workers, is something super, super important, and we really would like to address that and address on how students can get the help they need. Next slide.
And the students are all available to answer any questions the board might have.
So does it, do people have questions? I guess I will say just go ahead if you do. I want to compliment all the student board members. I had a chance to go to the student summit, and I was really impressed with the conversations I heard going on. There's a lot of really good discussions among kids from all of our high schools. I have one question, and that is, one thing that's always struck me is all of our high schools have their own websites, which is great, you need that, but it almost seems like we should have some sort of district-wide information. For example, you mentioned on volunteer resources. Some high schools may have some things, others may not. Was there any discussion about having some sort of district-wide type information available to high school students?
Um, I know at my specific table, there wasn't and didn't seem to be any from any of the other students at my school, but I definitely do feel that would be really beneficial, especially for like anything like regarding like course requirements or like community engagement, that would be really beneficial.
And I wonder about even scholarships, because I know some high schools, you can see the scholarship list on their webpages, others may not have it, so there's a real variety there.
Can I ask a question that of the students, but of Tony? What happens from here? All this information that the students gather and talk about, what does administration do with this information?
So the power really starts, well, the power is in the voice of these amazing students that come together for this day. When they get back on their buses and return back to their schools, the process of getting this feedback into the hands of their principals is already underway, and the site administrators, these are the leaders. These students are the leaders who bring that back to their schools and really start to implement things more on the ground. From what you heard today was more of the district-wide perspective, so some of the things that we're already doing is Ms. Mistorovic and I and Mr. Hyderscheidt will have further conversations about the role of the deans and how we can support them in their work differently. We'll have conversations. We actually started that last year a little bit more along in the area of social workers and how do they make sure that social workers are more accessible to students? And a lot of schools already took steps at the beginning of this year to make sure that they were introducing social workers during freshman orientation, but we want to make sure that that's an expectation across all of our schools. So all the feedback we get is truly being implemented, both looking at it from the district lens and then also at the school base, what can schools actually implement?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I know we didn't have a lot of chance before we had to go to distance learning, but could some of the students talk about what their conversations were with their principals when they got back to their schools?
I can go. Going back to Larkin High School, we all sat down in a room, everyone that attended the summit, and we sat down with Mr. Croson, and we asked him all the questions, we fleshed everything out, we sort of, I wouldn't say attacked him, but we explained sort of what we saw at other high schools and stuff that we could implement and just sort of ask questions on why we do the things that we do. And he answered a lot of the questions that we needed, but he also looked towards the future and finding, okay, what do we need to get better at? Asking our advice about what we should do or how we can improve our school and the things that we do throughout Larkin High School. So I felt that it was really important that we had that conversation because it was 30 of us in a classroom talking to the principal, like administration, like we felt that we had a voice and we felt that, okay, maybe we can change something in the school if we don't like it. And I feel like that opened a, opened a discussion for students and the principal to actually talk and talk about what we're feeling, and I don't know, I feel like it was a great conversation going back after the summit.
Great, thank you.
Could we ask Hallie to say a few words as the student advisor who led the CEO student advisory through this process and facilitated, could you share a little bit of your feedback too, Hallie?
Um, I think, I'm just trying to think of what I want to hit on the most, because there's just so much talked about and discussed, and I think what you're talking about, what Ms. Smith asked with like, what do we do with all this information? And I think that's like my biggest feedback is making sure that we start implementing these things at the high schools, because every year we have this, every year people talk about what we want to be done, and I'm seeing more strides from the high schools and even at the administration level of actually starting to implement these things, and I hope we continue to do that. So any students watching, I'd ask you guys to do the same thing. If there's a change you want to be made, really push your administration at the school to do that, and really, that's just my biggest thing, is making sure we're actually doing something with the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hallie. But any other questions, comments? Thank you all so much.
Yep, thank you all very, very much.
Can I ask Kelly a quick question?
Sure.
Hallie, you as seniors, are you, um, working with the juniors to keep this moving forward?
Um, yeah, so a lot of that work is done through our principal advisory boards that we have at each high school. And from my understanding and what I know, there's a wide range of ages in all those advisory boards, you have like freshmen, there's seniors, and they just add in more students, rotate them out, I guess, as the years go on. So those advisory boards are the people who keep this work going.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you all very much. As I said, I thought it was a really valuable experience, and I really enjoyed attending it, so, so glad you were able to do it this year.
And don't go anywhere, because you're going to be presenting again here in a few minutes, so. Madam President, should we move on to public comments then?
Yes.
So as a reminder, we started the meeting a little bit early so that people would know that if you want to make a public comment, you can enter your name, address, and topic into the Q and A portion of your screen. You'll see it down at the bottom portion of your Zoom screen. Again, if you enter your name, address, and topic, we will call on you to make a public comment at this time. Madam President, it does not appear that we have any public comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Just for the record, I am also, we also posted the meeting to be in room 140 at the central office. I am in room 140, and we have the building accessible for the public at this point, and nobody is in the room with me.
How about yourself? Okay, moving on then, other business, board member and superintendent update. Yes, we haven't been doing much these days, except staying home. The governor did announce that schools will be, attending school in person will be, is done for the rest of the academic year, so. Anything you want to add to that, Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, just, I know we continue to get a lot of questions, and unfortunately, we don't have a lot of answers right now for some of the things that people want more information about, for example, access to buildings, when can students clean out different things they might have left at school? We are working on plans, but we will not be doing anything urgently in that area because we are still, we want to honor the hold in place to the best of our ability, recognizing that we, at some point, we have to let kids come in and get their items out of their lockers and so forth. So we're working on plans that would provide for that in a very safe way, and we will be announcing that. As you know, we've also announced that we've tentatively scheduled a graduation for July 11th. That's if we're able to actually have an in-person graduation, and if we're not, we have contingencies to do an online, a virtual graduation ceremony. And I know that our high schools are paying very close attention to our senior class. We had all the lights on the active stadiums lit on Friday night, and I know the schools are trying to get signs put in the yards of students and engaging in a lot of different activities to make sure that we're recognizing our graduating seniors. trying to get signs put in the yards of students and engaging in a lot of different activities to make sure that we're recognizing our graduating seniors.
Right. Anyone else?
So I just want to jump in. This is Melissa. I know a few of us have gone on and done the different webinars with IASB and with forensic. If you guys haven't done any of those, it's probably worthwhile to at least go back and look at some of the recordings that have been posted or, you know, jump on one when you can. I know we're all kind of inundated. I know I'm inundated with work stuff too, but I, I think there's a lot of good information and there's generally a lot of good questions that come out of that and you hear different things from different districts, so. It's, it's at least interesting to hear some of the different perspectives going on about how we're going to move forward. So I think it's a good, good way to, to keep connected with people.
Yeah, I would second that. I, I found both the forensic ones and the IASB webinar is useful, so.
I agree. I've been on quite a few and it's been very informative and very educational for me. I'm a little shook right now because I just got a text that a friend passed away.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry to hear that.
Sorry, you got to take time. For your request, Mr. Sanders.
There's one Freedom of Information Act request that we've responded to that is available on Board Docs and will also be posted on the website this coming week.
Consent agenda, Mr. Sanders.
We have on the consent agenda, personnel report and workers' compensation cases, minutes of the board meeting, April 6, 2020. Renewal of school District U46 high school membership in the Illinois High School Association for 2020-2021. Contract renewal for the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools Instruction and Equity for Hero Behavior Tracking Annual Renewal. Contract renewal for educational support programs and alignment for advanced advancement via individual determination. A contract renewal for educational pathways, project lead the way, participation fee. Proposal from Business Services for driver's education car replacement. Proposal from Business Services for forms and workflow software. A change order from plant operations for Eastview Middle School Cooler and Freezer Demolition. And finally, an occupancy permit for Larkin High School 12 Classroom, 12 Temporary Classroom Project Number 264, 265, 266, and 267.
Thank you. Are there any items that board members would like removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move, this is Melissa. Seconded, Veronica.
Any discussion questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President?
Yes.
Approved seven zero.
Discussion action, Mr. Sanders.
First item under discussion action are itemized bills, April 20th, 2020. Mr. Burnage is on the Zoom call. If you have any questions. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the list of bills in the amount of $8,66,294.61.
Hey, could I have a motion to approve the list of bills in the amount of $8,66,294.61?
So move, this is Veronica. Second, Melissa.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Approved seven zero.
Our next item under discussion action is a secondary student wellness curriculum proposal. This was presented at the last board meeting as a work session agenda and returns due tonight for a final vote. Joining on the Zoom call, if you have additional questions, are Dr. Carpenter, Dr. Schrod, and Ms. Chikitis. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the secondary student wellness curriculum proposal.
I have a motion to approve the secondary student wellness curriculum proposal.
So move, this is Veronica. Second, Melissa.
Any question or discussion? Hey, roll call, please.
Mrs. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Ms. Thomas?
I said yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't come through. Madam President?
Yes.
Approved seven zero.
Our next item is the recommendation for the 2020-2021 student advisor to the Board of Education. Always an exciting opportunity when our students of the superintendent student advisory are able to present after they've conducted interviews and everything else, the final recommendation for next year's student advisor. Here to present are some of the same students as before with one addition. We have Graham Hunt from South Elgin High School, Martina Mendel-Duncan, Duncans, and Michelle Estrada from Larkin High School. Caitlin Gack and Jessica Pierce of Bartlett High School. So if they want to jump in and give their recommendation.
Hi, everyone. I'm Graham Hunt. I will be starting us off again tonight. So on behalf of the entire CEO Student Advisory Council, let me thank the board for the opportunity to be involved in the selection of the student advisor to the board. This was a process that we took very seriously. Like us, I am sure you will find that the two finalists for the student advisor to the board are both outstanding candidates. Either of them would be an excellent addition to the board. The process of to the board has been just one of the many important tasks we've worked on over the year.
So the process we followed was completely student-driven. However, we do want to thank Mr. Sanders for his guidance and support he provided us throughout the year. In the fall of 2019, high school principals were asked to solicit nominations for the position, which would be submitted to the school's principal advisory committee. The principal advisory committee for each school was given until January 24th, 2020 to select and submit the names of those two student nominees, along with the following information. A letter of reference from a faculty member or principal, the student's transcripts demonstrating that the candidate is in good academic standing, a student-written essay explaining why the student would be a good nominee for the position of student advisor to the board, and new this year, a resume highlighting their education, accomplishments, job or volunteer experience, skills, and any other points of interest.
We received a total of 10 student nomination packets that were complete and submitted by the deadline, including students from each of the five comprehensive high schools, Bartlett, Elgin, Larkin, South Elgin, and Streamwood. The meeting we held to narrow the candidates concluded with a decision to interview five candidates based on the strengths that they each possess. In March, the CEO Student Advisory Council interviewed all five candidates. During our interviews, we looked far beyond student performance in narrowing our list. Our goal was to select those students who could represent the voices of all high school students and who had the inner drive to make a difference. Based on our review of each candidate and the interviews we conducted, we are recommending to the Board of Education, in order of preference, our two finalists. First, Olivia Howell of South Elgin High School, and second, Maria Joseph of South Elgin High School.
Olivia Howell, a Beacon Academy junior at South Elgin High School, began her U46 career when she moved to Elgin as a freshman. She's very passionate for South Elgin School and School District U46 because of the countless opportunities this diverse district has to offer. She's a driven leader and has unselfishly donated many hours of her time giving back to the community by making commercials for Food For Bitter Elgin, a local record store, and festivals. She volunteers for organizations such as Jobs Daughters, the Wounded Warrior Project, Hike, Adopt a Platoon, National Suicide Prevention, the Larkin House, Anderson Animal Shelter, Change for Hunger, Feed My Starving Children, and more. She will no doubt be an asset to our community as well as a student advisor to the U46 Board of Education.
In addition to her leadership qualities, Olivia has demonstrated her commitment to South Elgin by her involvement in the CEO Student Advisory Council, Principal Student Advisory Committee, Principal Student Council, Speak Mentor, Friday Lightning, and one of South Elgin's largest clubs, Best Buddies, by helping plan events for students with intellectual or developmental disabilities. She also somehow finds time to work and plays golf for the district's Upstate A-Golf Girls U-Golf Team.
Olivia realizes the importance of being a leader in a diverse community and is prepared to make a difference in school District U46. She understands the importance of hard work, organization, and teamwork, and is ready to be the voice of U46 in meaningful conversations as a student advisor to the Board of Education. It is our honor to present Olivia Howell as our candidate for student advisor to the board for the next term.
Should the board accept our recommended choice of Olivia Howell, we further recommend that Maria Joseph of South Elgin High School serve as the alternate in the event Olivia is unable to fulfill her one-year term.
Maria, a student since kindergarten, a U46 student since kindergarten, is committed and passionate about the U46 students, social justice, and mental health. She's a member of the National Honor Society, Echo Club, Random Acts of Kindness Club, and is involved in sports and activities. She understands the importance of hard work, organization, and teamwork while taking a rigorous course load and ranking 11% in her class.
Let us emphasize again, though, that each of the candidates we reviewed would make an excellent student advisor to the board. Our deepest appreciation goes out to those students who were nominated and agreed to participate in this process.
Finally, we would like to acknowledge the hard work of the entire CEO Student Advisory Council for dedicating additional time out of their schedules to review applications and conduct interviews. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Aren't they amazing? They're great.
They are amazing.
So typically in a normal board meeting, we would, we would ask the candidate, the, the recommended choices to stand up and be recognized and, and say a few words. So the only way that anybody in the public can see them is if I ask Olivia to, to start talking and share a few thoughts about the position and, and her background as well, so we can see her.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. First of all, I just want to thank everyone so much for supporting me through this process. I didn't know I was being able to speak, so I'm just so grateful to have this opportunity. Yeah, and I'm super excited to be your recommendation to represent the students of U46. I am so passionate about the change for the greater good of all students, and I am just so excited. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Maria, would you like to say a few words about the process and being selected as the, as the alternate candidate? So you're unmuted, but I don't think, I can't hear you at least. Can you, is your microphone working?
Nope, still can't hear you.
Well, we have you waved, everybody. There you go. You want to try one more time?
Yeah, um, okay, I'll try again. Hi, everyone. I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to be, you know, the second-in-command for Olivia, and it's so happy to see her in this position, and I'm super excited to be a part of the change. And I know that being a part of this district since I was in kindergarten, I know that this district is capable of more than just change, but a chance to better, you know, everyone. And I'm super excited and being along on this process from starting to write the letter to getting, you know, the recommendation and hearing about the progress going on. It's nothing more than exciting, and I can't wait to be a part of something more to better our district. So thank you again.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you both, and congratulations. I'm sure I speak for the whole board when I say we're looking forward to meeting you in person. So thank you and congratulations again. And thank you for all the people who work so hard on, on selecting the new student advisor. I know it's a great addition to the board. I've known a number of them over the years, even before I was a board member, and they are a great asset, and it's wonderful that we have this. So thank you.
And I think this is the first student we've had as student advisor since the very first student advisor. Andrew Boston was at South Elgin High School, but I think, I think this is our second South Elgin High School student in these 10 years. So anyway, sorry, just another quick comment. With that, administration recommends that you accept the CEO Student Advisor's recommendation and regarding Olivia Howell and Maria Joseph.
So I need a motion in that, right?
Yes.
Okay, could I have a motion to accept the recommendation for Olivia Howell to be the next student advisor and Maria Joseph be the alternative?
So moved. So moved? Well, second, however.
Could you repeat?
I think Veronica, you moved?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, second, then, Kate.
Oh, I thought it was Kate and then Veronica, and it was the other way?
I think we both said it at the same time, Miguel, so I'm not sure it matters too much.
Well, for the record, then it's Ms. Nolan and then Ms. Thomas seconded. Okay, thank you very much. Roll call?
Uh, did anyone want to say anything? Any comments? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion approved seven zero.
Congratulations, Olivia.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Congratulations.
Moving on, CAC update, Tony, are there any CAC people watching us?
Not that I noted.
Okay, all right. Okay, other business, Mr. Sanders.
First item under other businesses is the March financial report, and here to bring that is Mr. Burnage.
Good evening. At the end of March, our total fund balances are $325,287,262, which is an increase of $33.2 million from February. For revenue, we received $57.6 million in property tax payments from the state paid $17.9 million for evidence-based funding, but we only received $72,000 for category at the end of the month. The state owed $10.7 million for category and our federal revenue for the month was $3.8 million. So while our total revenue is higher than we've expected through the end of March, the state shutdown is going to delay the extra revenue collections for the state of Illinois. And it will cause a further delay in remaining federal payments. On the expenditure side, we've spent 73.3% of the annual budget, which is pretty close in line with where we expected to be at about 74%. And then we're working on the tentative FY21 budget, and we should have some updates on that for next month. If there's any questions, I could answer them at this time.
Are there any questions? Dale, I have one question. We expect property taxes payments in the spring, but I'm hearing that some of the, the counties may allow taxpayers to be delayed without interest penalty.
Yes.
So that's another, another area where we could see a shortfall in revenue.
Yeah, so there's two, two things. Yeah, so there's, uh, two, two things for that. One, uh, the, the payments we received in March are from Cook County and that is their first payment. Uh, so the timing worked out well for us on that compared to if we were solely in, in County. Because those payments are usually due in June. So, uh, because we are a cruel, uh, accounting method, uh, even if those payments are delayed a little bit, uh, for the financial statements, we'll still be able to recognize fifty percent of the tax levy for this fiscal year. So then this really comes down to a cash flow issue. Uh, we do have enough cash. Um, on the summary sheet, we have a hundred and fifty-four days cash in hand without getting working cash flow. That should not be an issue either.
And at some point are we going to, I've received some money from the federal government for the, um, stimulus bill or whatever they're calling it, the CARES bill?
Yes. It looks like preliminary, uh, a lot of it is about seven point seven million.
Okay.
Just a quick note on that, if Mr. Burnage doesn't mind me interjecting is, um, it, so the federal government has still not released the federal CARES Act dollars yet. They're working with, through the Department of, uh, US Department of Education on, um, the applications that states have to fill out first. And then, uh, Illinois will then determine what process we'll have to follow to gain access to those revenues. Um, and we can also use those revenues between now and, um, uh, twenty, uh, September twenty twenty-one, I believe is the cutoff for using those funds. So, um, certainly we'll have expenditures within this year that, that will qualify for reimbursement. Uh, but this is money that, uh, that we can continue to use, uh, to provide support for distance learning. I also need to note that, uh, the amount that the general public saw, uh, the seven plus million dollars, it was preliminary, uh, from the State Department of Education was really just preliminary. We have to wait for the final numbers, uh, because they did not, uh, for example, provide the amounts that also go to our area private schools and charter schools.
Any other questions? Hey, thank you, Mr. Burnage.
If there are no additional questions, then next we have the investment report for the third quarter, Mr. Burnage.
Yes, uh, so for our third quarter investment reports, our total invested funds as of March thirty-first were three hundred thirty-three million, nine hundred five thousand, eight hundred thirty-three. Our current yield is one point three eight three percent and the accrued interest from January first to the end of March is one million, four hundred forty-two thousand and thirteen dollars. March, we did see dramatic, uh, cut to interest rates, so we will continue to see our yield rate decline in the future quarters. And then we'll have to reinvest our funds at lower rates. And if there's any questions on the investment report, I could answer them at this time.
Are there any questions?
Kevin, John Deveraux, quick question. Besides the decline in rate, which is, you know, down almost a full point from about a year ago, uh, the duration is down quite a bit. Is that intentional because of managing cash flow? Um, or, and concerns about cash coming in? Because that's contributing besides the drop in interest rates, the shortening of the duration contributed to that as well.
Part of it is the, usually this is the time of year we start looking at the cash flow for the upcoming year and start making some of those longer-term investments. Uh, so usually between April and June, we get a lot of, typically we would get a lot of money from getting to page those property tax payments in June and we would use some of those funds for the more extended investments, longer, longer dated investments.
Thank you. Any other questions?
The secondary schools' financial report for the third quarter, Mr. Burnage.
And finally, this evening, we have the secondary schools' financial reports. Activity accounts for the third quarter, which was January first to March thirty-first. Uh, the balances have remained, uh, steady during the quarter. The total balance for all high and middle schools is four million, two thousand, three hundred fifty-one dollars. And for the quarter, the balances decreased, uh, only eight thousand, nine hundred dollars, which is less than one percent. Uh, if there's any questions on these reports, I could answer them at this time.
Are there any questions? I have one, one question. I know some of our high schools used to go to like, or have, have gone to Disney World or other places, have saved up money for that. I hope they got refunds or whatever and that, that, that money will just accumulate and get refunded.
Yes, that's correct. Typically, we would see in the fourth quarter, a lot of these funds get driven down. And, uh, we may see some differences at the end of June, just because some of those funds carry over. Uh, and there probably will be refunds on some trips and things like that where money can come back in that was dispersed in the third quarter.
Hey, this is John Deveraux again. Couple of quick questions. Uh, first, on that same note, I presume will there be a variety of refunds on like athletic participation fees and other things for the spring semester?
Yes, exactly, exactly. A lot of the, uh, spring sports, we'd have to be collecting the fees. So we are in the process of refunding all of those.
Okay, and my other question, and I've seen this in the past, but just bringing it up now, uh, at least several of the high schools, maybe all of them have a, uh, sort of a large fund that's been accrued related to parking permits. Um, a couple of the schools are like at sixty thousand dollars or so. And I'm wondering, is that just, do they reserve that and then put it into general funds of their own or does that, uh, go towards any capital projects? Or I'm just curious what that, is it that gets transferred out at some point?
Yes, those funds, uh, are, are collected each year by the schools or each semester. And then usually at the end of the year, we'll send those funds to the district and then it will help offset the cost of repaving the parking lots.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hi, John. Okay. Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Burnage. Moving on, um, work session.
Thank you. Um, joining for work session, of course, for all the items is Mr. Phelps, Senior Business Official of Business Services. Our first item for, uh, the board's consideration tonight is a contract renewal for secondary instruction and equity with Apex Learning. Uh, also available to, to support with any questions you may have is Ms. Mistorovic, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools Instruction and Equity, and Ms. Chapman, Director of Post-Secondary Success. Administration recommends, um, award of the three-year contract renewal with Apex Learning for a total amount of six hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and is included in the budgets for those fiscal years.
Are there any questions? I had a couple of questions. One is I assume that students who are using Apex are still able to use it with distance learning since it's an online platform, so that's no problem. And do we pay for this per student? Is that how it's, how it's done or?
So it's, it's per seat. So we have fifteen seats and then once students are, and, and there's unlimited enrollment. So a student, if they're recovering the credit for language arts semester one and, uh, algebra, they can be, um, enrolled in those simultaneously. So it's per seat and then once they're complete, then we can use that seat for another student.
Oh, okay, great. Any other questions? Okay.
Our next work session items are bids and proposals. The first is a bid from Plan Operations for Streamwood High School Exterior Waterproofing Foundation Wall Insulation Repairs and Sidewalk and Drainage Improvements Project Number Three fourteen. Uh, Ms. Downs, uh, she, the Downs Director of Plan Operations is also joining to help support this presentation. Administration recommends award of a low bid meeting specification to LaRusso Cement Contractors, Inc. in the amount of four hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Operation Maintenance Fund and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? Oh, next item.
All right, our next is a bid from Plan Operations for Washington Elementary School Sidewalk and Drainage Improvement Project Number Fifteen forty-four. Administration recommends award of a low bid meeting specification to Landmark Contractors, Inc. in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Operation Maintenance Fund and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? Hey, next item.
Our next item is a bid from Plan Operations for Larson Middle School Sound System Project Number Five oh six. Administration recommends award of a low bid meeting specification to Advanced Communications, Inc. in the amount of fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Operation Maintenance Fund and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? Hey, next item.
Our next is a bid from Transportation for a service truck purchase. Uh, joining Mr. Phelps for this presentation is Mr. Prowl, Director of Transportation. Administration recommends award of a low bid meeting specification to Sutton Ford in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the, to the Transportation Fund and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? Hey, next item.
Our next item is a proposal from Curriculum and Instruction for Kindergarten Readiness Backpacks for Preschool. Mr. Phelps is available to support as well as Celia Banks, Coordinator of Elementary Literacy, and Ms. Andera, Director of Early Learning Initiatives. Um, the administration recommends approval of the proposal from School Specialty in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Educational Fund and we have included that in the budget for this year. I'd like to make a quick note about this. I, I know, I had a few inquiries and provided a memo to the board to kind of give you an idea of what's included in these backpacks. We're in a place and time where, uh, distance learning is our norm for the foreseeable future. Uh, we've been trying our best to support students with Chromebook distribution, uh, grades first and up, uh, iPads for kindergarteners, um, but we also need to find ways to support our earliest learners. And this is one of the ways that we can provide at least, uh, something educational for students to be doing pre-K, uh, to support them for kindergarten readiness for next school year. With the leave of the board, uh, I know I have the authorization from the resolution you passed at the last meeting, uh, but our intention would be to go ahead and purchase these, move forward with purchase, purchasing, uh, these items as quickly as we can and still bring them back forward on the consent agenda at the next meeting.
Any comments, questions? Is that okay with people?
It's fine with me, but I had a question that a lot of the items are consumable and, um, is there anything left in the budget? So if parents have to come back and restock that on those consumable items that it would be able, they would be able to do so? I know this is just a starting point for them.
Yeah, do we have a, Celia or Peggy, do you, can you weigh in on that?
Yes, this is Peggy. Um, what I would say is that the items that are within that backpack, so we've got a number grid, we've got an alphabet chart, we've got a whiteboard with, yes, the markers are consumable. Um, but some of the items would be able to be used throughout the kindergarten year as well. The construction paper and the journals, yes, those would, and the bubbles would be consumable. We also would be looking at, you know, are there other opportunities, other materials that we could access to be able to supplement this? But for right now, this is a starting point for us.
Thank you.
And I'd like to note also that the U forty-six Educational Foundation has been working to support this effort as well through, uh, by providing art packs, which should be additional consumable materials that students could use for art at home for pre-K. So they'll, they'll assist and hopefully try to replenish some of those resources as well.
Are there other questions, comments?
And this is Melissa. Are there going to be, um, instructions then for parents too to be able to best use these items that are in the backpack?
Yes, once, once we go ahead and are able to purchase these, then we will work with teachers to let them know what's in the backpacks. These items do relate to the standards that we're addressing and that will be addressed in kindergarten as well. So, um, clearly a number chart and an alphabet chart are things that children are familiar with from the classroom. And so this will be a way to carry over that learning into the home.
Okay, yeah, and I-
I'll just piggyback on that for a minute, Melissa. There's also a little, um, guide in each of these, in English and in Spanish, according to whatever, um, language we're, um, giving them to students, that has a page for each of the content areas. So, um, it's a guide for parents that has activities that are appropriate for, um, literacy, for math and for the things that are in the backpack. So within the backpack itself, instructions to help the parents.
Okay, all right, perfect. Yeah, so I mean, I, I would agree that because this is replacing the learning that they would be doing now, um, that it's, you know, of interest to get these out so that, uh, kids can continue their learning just like all the other kids are doing. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Anyone else? Okay, all right. Well, unlike other meetings, we're going to move to closed session now. Before I read the whole thing I have to read, I just want to remind board members that we need to exit, leave this meeting, go to the email we got and click on join that meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Sanders? Okay, so I will read. Could I have a motion to move into closed session to discuss individual student disciplinary matters, pending probable or imminent litigation, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the Public or Legal Council for the Public Body, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the school board, the setting of a price for the sale or lease of real property owned by the school board, collective negotiating matters between the, sorry, school board and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules of, for one or more of, one or more class of employees, review of closed session minutes and individual student matters.
I'll move, this is Veronica.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Sporter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
We are in closes.
Okay, so we'll see you, see you when closed, okay.